Okay, thank you and good afternoon and welcome to everybody for this first meeting of the Finance Subcommittee. The meeting today is open to the public but we've not received any questions or petitions from the public, just general housekeeping. Can I please request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square here today. As it's the first meeting, I think it's probably a good idea that we introduce ourselves to members of the public who may be watching when we go down. So, I'll start mine, it's councillor Brian Lodge, I'm the co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee and I'm a member for Burley Ward. Zahira.
Hi, I'm councillor Zahira Nas, I'm also co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Councillor Maru Farth, spokesperson and councillor for Netherdredin Charrow.
Councillor Mike Livery, deputy chair and councillor for West Ecclesfield.
Councillor Joe Otten, councillor for Dornotley.
Shafak Mohammed, councillor for Ecclesall.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southie Ward.
Thank you and officer, oh sorry, I do apologise, I do apologise, sorry.
Yeah, here at the back is councillor Marian Elliott for Gleedless Valley.
Sorry Marian, you're just down behind the office here and he's going to see you, lean across a bit. And for the officers that we have present, Ryan.
Afternoon everyone, my name's Ryan Keyworth, I'm the councillor director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Jane Willby, head of accounting.
I'm Damien Watkins, I'm the finance manager for Capital.
And we've also got in the back, Tom, if you want to introduce yourself.
Come to this one. Afternoon everyone, I'm Tom Smith, I'm the new director of Direct Services, I'm on my, start of my fourth week, so I'm responsible for this committee, mainly for facilities management, but also got the housing repair service and fleet and transport as well. So really good to be here, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Not an apology of such Chair, but just to let you know that there was a change of the membership at council last week. Councillor Miskell is no longer a member and there is a vacancy but there will be an appointment imminently.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing on the agenda today to exclude the press and the public, so we'll move on to declarations of interest. Any member wish to declare an interest in any items on the agenda today? Take that as a no. And we've received no public questions or petitions, so we'll move straight on to item six, the Budget Monitoring, Financial Position and Budget Timetable Month One. Ryan, I think you're presenting on this, yeah?
Thanks Chair. So what the committee have by way of a report from me on this is the material that went to the Strategy and Resources Committee last week, plus the more detailed budget monitoring that will go to every policy committee over the course of the next couple of weeks, starting with the Education, Children and Families Committee tomorrow in fact. The report clearly shows that the council is in a very challenging financial position and provides background information to the council's financial position and four things really. Summary of the outturn for 21/22, so last year, the use of reserves that we're making to support the council's financial position, the latest forecast for 22/23, so this current financial year, as at the end of April, so the most recent we have available today, and an outlook for 23/24, so next financial year, and a budget timetable proposed and agreed actually last week by the Strategy and Resources Committee to get us to that budget and to set a budget properly by the time we need to in early March. So the background information in the report clearly sets out the council resolutions that have been passed recently requiring committees to stay within the budget and also giving this committee via Strategy and Resources a remit in monitoring and managing that position across the council. The outturn for last year, we finished £19.8 million overspend as set out in the report. The position did improve fairly late towards the end of the year, but for one-off reasons, so there is an underlying overspend that is of significant concern and is certainly not sustainable beyond the fairly short term. We have used, or we've allocated, £70 million of the council's reserves to manage our financial position both last year and into this year, to give us time to return to a sustainable and balanced position. So far we've used £20 million of that in balancing last year, we used £15 million of that in setting a budget for 22/23, so 35 total, and we've set aside £25 million further to use to manage the risk of delivery of the savings, and there are significant savings in the 22/23 budget, so we've got about £53 million of savings that were approved at council for the 22/23 budget, and we've set aside £25 million to manage the timing risk, in other words savings delivered later than expected or not in time for the start of the year, but also an element of delivery risk where, you know, very complicated, difficult savings aren't always able to be delivered fully, so we've got some reserves set aside to manage that and to give us a bit of time and space to do that. As at month one, what we're saying in the report is that we've used about 18.7 of that £25 million of savings, of reserves for next year, for this year, sorry, already. So we're showing an overspend position of 18.7 million, that's on top of the £15 million that we put into the budget to balance in the first instance. Most of the challenge we've got for 22/23 relates to savings that were agreed at council not yet being fully delivered or not being forecast as not being fully delivered. There's one or two specific examples I'll pull out in a minute. There are also some ongoing pressures which we didn't anticipate in the budget setting process around energy costs, and they've risen really since the budget was set, as I'm sure everybody's familiar with. We're managing most of those this year using one-offs, so we've got some provisions that we've been able to release to cover them, but that will become a problem and is a problem for the 23/24 budget setting process, once you've used the one-offs they're gone. If energy prices stay high, as most people expect they will, then that will become an issue that we'll have to manage as part of the budget setting process. So, the budget, the report you've got in front of you then really goes on to set out in a fair bit of detail the budget monitoring position for each of the committees, the policy committees that the council has. I'm happy to take any questions that members have got in the detail of that, but I will just pull out the two committees with the largest overspends and just talk very briefly about those. The Adults Committee has got the largest overspend, is also the committee with by far the largest budget, so the fact that you see large numbers in the Adults Committee is of no great surprise, but the challenge it's facing, like others really, is in implementing the savings that were approved as part of the budget process, in particular case reviews. There's some detail in the report that sets it out. This is an activity of reviewing care packages and cases for people who have potentially high cost care packages, or just an ongoing process of reviewing them to make sure that people are receiving the care packages that they need and that anything that's no longer needed or an alternative way that that care can be provided is actually implemented. It's a really difficult and challenging task and I make no light of it at all, but the services have really struggled to actually get to that task. I'm sure the Adults Committee will spend quite a bit of time on that at their meeting in the next week or so. In the Children's Committee, Education, Children and Families Committee, the biggest challenge there is actually quite a different one. The two savings that are causing them the biggest problem actually relate to capital investment and the task of trying to work out how to successfully deliver the investment that's been planned in the budget in a way that will actually reduce ongoing operating costs. So this is about delivering additional capacity for secure accommodation at Aldine House and additional capacity for council-run children's homes. So they're the two big ones that are causing, you know, a decent amount of the overspend, a significant proportion of the overspend. Looking forward to 23/24, the position continues to look challenging. There's no indications that we've had from government so far that any significant additional support's going to be forthcoming above that already announced. The comprehensive spending review that the government issued only last year, set national totals but didn't drill those totals down into local authorities beyond a one-year settlement, so we have a degree of uncertainty. The other thing we're uncertain about is the extent to which the government will recognise inflationary pressures that councils like everyone else are facing at this time and whether we will receive any additional funding because of that. We think we might receive some, we don't know what, and we won't know what that funding will be until probably the autumn. We'd expect an autumn statement from the Chancellor of the Exchequer sometime in October and we wouldn't then find out the consequences of that, of any announcements that are made for Sheffield City Council until just before Christmas. Local government finance settlements tend to come, as members will be aware and have done for many years now, in the very last minute in the run-up to Christmas. So we are facing a significant budget gap and we're facing that without certainty from government of any additional funding, so we need to plan on a relatively prudent basis. And with that in mind, the timetable that Stratton Resources approved last week brings the budget process forward good two or three months from the way we've run budgets in the past. The next meeting of the Strategy and Resources Committee on the 5th of July will receive a medium-term financial analysis report from me, that's about three months earlier than it normally would be, and that'll set out both the council's available resources within which we think it has to plan and set out an approach, or recommend an approach, to each committee as to how we're going to set budget targets for each committee and the approach that we're going to ask committees to take in developing either additional income proposals or savings or hopefully a combination of the two. The timetable then requires policy committees to do quite significant work over the summer to report back to their own committees during the month of September, so the second round of their meetings, and then to Strategy and Resources in October, on the 12th of October. We'll be doing parallel work with this committee along that way to make sure that the members of this committee are involved in that process and are up to speed with what's going on. I know, you know, one or two members of this committee do also sit on Strategy and Resources, but we'll do the work to make sure that all members of the committee are fully briefed on what's going on and perhaps with you Chair, we can work out how we can best do that in our conversations that we have between us. So the hope then is that there will be time for an iteration of the budget after that October Strategy and Resources meeting, but my hope is very much that we finalise the budget before Christmas at the Strategy and Resources meeting on the 5th of December. We really need to do that so that, for example, the Housing Committee can report to full council in February and to make sure that the housing rent levels which need to be set ahead of council tax are done in good time. So we are on a bit of a Christmas deadline here and the opportunity that we used to have under the previous governance system to slip it beyond Christmas has really gone with the committee system and the way we need to work slightly differently now. So Chair, I think that covers the report, I'm obviously happy to take questions from members or any comments that anyone's got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mohammed.
Chair, probably going to have about three to four questions, should do it one at a time Ryan? Okay, that's better. Just want to look back first and then we can look forward, particularly in terms of efficiencies. Am I right in thinking that last year we were looking around £15 million in efficiency savings, is that correct, yeah?
Yes, I think that's right.
Something like that, wasn't it? So how much of that do we actually achieve? Do we achieve it all? If so, great. If not, how much was achieved and what was the reasons for not achieving?
I think you might be preempting a slightly more detailed outturn report that will come to Strategy and Resources in a couple of weeks, so I don't have the detail to hand to answer that specific question. Okay. The reason why we've seen cost pressures roll from last year into this year is actually more due to the run-over of high-cost care packages in social care than anything else. We put forward a recovery plan for adult social care which had a two-year time horizon last year, so that work is still ongoing and what this report reflects really is some delays in that process as opposed to anything else. But the outturn report, which will come to Strategy and Resources in a couple of weeks' time, will set out the, literally the more detail on that.
Because the other question I did have Ryan was that, obviously we had got, what was it, 50 million, 70 million, sorry, 70 million reserves to be used to help with the budget and obviously 20 of that was used to balance last year, and was it all around health and social care or not? Because, you know, what was, really what was the 20 million used for? Was it all predominantly health and social care or was it children's as well?
It was a combination of adults and children's social care, they were the two, without those two we probably wouldn't be having a conversation about this.
Do you know what the split was?
About 50/50 from memory.
50/50, okay.
So in the report on section 1.2.1, there's a small table that shows the split by service. So the people portfolio, the variance was 22.4 million, roughly 50/50, adults and childrens.
Then the other question that, you know, I'm sure people out there will be asking as well is, why do we use 15 million in reserve just to balance this year's budget? Think through that, will you?
Yeah, sure. The ask on services and therefore members was to make around 70 million of savings to deal with the ongoing consequences of the cost of the pandemic in areas like social care and also normal levels of cost and demand inflation that we see from year to year. At the time we set the budget, members felt that the sort of savings that we were going to have to generate, or the sort of things we were going to have to do to generate that full 70 million of savings were not acceptable and would have required significant cuts to frontline vital services that support some of the most vulnerable people in the city. So what we were asked to do was to see if we could find a way of smoothing that out and to give us a bit more time to make more strategic and careful changes to the way we provide those services. So in the budget report that was approved at council, a series of strategic reviews were set up, a significant one and relevant to this was around early intervention, prevention and financial support. And that covers a cost of 50, 60, 70 million pounds, depending on how you draw the boundaries across the organisation for everything from youth services through to council tax and hardship support. And the question that we're asking ourselves, and that piece of work continues, is is there a way of structuring that and doing that work differently so that we can provide the same or better even level of support but to do it in a more efficient way? The way that support's provided at the moment, and it still is today, and the reason for it was this, is it's done quite separately in different parts of the organisation across the council, so is there an opportunity to bring some of that support together and to make efficiencies by doing it? And if we could achieve savings by doing that, that would allow us to not take some of the more difficult and, quite frankly, unpalatable decisions that members were being asked to take as part of the budget process to cut vital services.
Final one Chair. So basically there were some options that we didn't take last year, hence why we've had to use 50, 20 million, but realistically some of those options could come back if the reviews that you're doing don't deliver the savings, given the situation we have is, last year we were looking for, what was it, 15 million efficiencies, this year we're looking at 53 million worth and already we're forecasting 18, 19 million, month one. Realistically are we looking at bringing some of those untenable options back? If so, what would be the realistic timetable to bring them back?
I think that's absolutely right, councillor Mohammed. We are going to have to look at things that we've previously rejected as being undesirable, you know, unpalatable savings. In terms of when they come back, I think it'll be for the individual policy committees to look at those. We've obviously still got the work that was done last year to develop those savings proposals, they can be very easily brought back to policy committees and this for me is the work that policy committees are going to need to be doing over the course of the summer to re-examine savings that were, opportunities that were previously rejected and decide whether they want to take those forward or propose them again, or whether they want to look at alternatives and different things that officers may be able to talk to them about or ideas that the members themselves have got, so yeah.
Chair, I've got a recommendation following Ryan's, can I come back at the end, yeah?
Thank you. Councillor Chaplin.
Thank you Chair and thank you Ryan for presenting this report. Like other reports that you've given, when last year I was a cabinet adviser, they do make sober reading and Sheffield shares, as it does with a lot of large northern cities, a fairly low tax base in terms of council tax revenues, we've got far more band-A properties to draw revenue on compared with a lot of towns and cities in the south. And we no longer have rate support grant, that went, if I remember right, in 2020. So cities like Sheffield are thrown more and more on our own resources and we are struggling to meet a lot of social need. But I do appreciate that you've presented a report which sets out what needs to be done and what the policy committees need to do and I know that my colleague Joe Otten, on whose committee I share, being deputy chair to his chair on Wasteland Street Scene, will have to look at what can be done in that area in more detail. Are you, do you feel that we've got a timetable here that can be worked to over the summer to establish what savings need to be achieved? Yeah, I think that's it in a nutshell.
I think it's a very, very challenging timetable, Mike, but I have to confess, I sat down to try and draft this timetable and I couldn't work out another way of doing it other than to try and get the issues out on the table as early as possible. There's inevitably going to need to be a significant amount of consultation with members, with members of the public. This timetable will effectively mean that the committee budget proposals or ideas that the committees are considering will be public in September, at the September round of the meetings, and that enables a much fuller conversation about the challenges that we're facing as an organisation than has been the case in the past where budget proposals essentially come out just after Christmas. Once all the internal conversations have taken place, some consultation, yes, but by doing it this way there's a lot more consultation, there's a lot more discussion in the open about it, which reflects the political situation of the council with no overall control and the committee system. So it's a very difficult timetable, it will require a lot of work from members and officers over the course of the summer, but I think it's the right timetable to get us to the difficult task at hand as soon as possible and to give us the best chance of a robust budget that we can start to implement and make good progress towards, you know, even before the start of 23/24 financial year.
Thank you, Ryan. Councillor Otten.
Thank you Chair, thank you Ryan for obviously all your work on this. I've got a couple of questions. At first, I mean, there was a figure in the budget that we agreed for this year that had potential pressures of £81 million and I'm slightly puzzled by that because we then have a savings figure of 53 million and if you subtract one from the other you get a 28 million shortfall and then we put in 15 million reserves, do we not immediately expect to be 13 million behind as a result of that? Or I misunderstood the figures?
So, very late in the day in the budget setting process for last year, it was actually when we got the outworkings of the comprehensive spending review and a few other things, that 13 million was additional government grant.
Right.
So the difference, 81 to 53, bridged by 15 million of reserves and a net 13 million of additional government grant, there were some, shenanigans is probably an inappropriate word to use, but that's what it felt like to me, looking through the numbers very late in the day.
Right, okay, okay, thank you, that explains that, okay. So, but we're in a position this year of 19 million projected overspend or thereabouts. You've kind of talked about the process for next year's budget and the urgency of that and I agree with that and obviously the similar stuff and that, I just wondered what does urgency look like in terms of this year's budget and that 19 million?
So that's probably the bit I did skip over and apologies for that. When I'm at your policy committee in a week or two's time, I'll be talking to you about the pressures that are in your budget and, you know, the Children's, Education and Children's Committee tomorrow, talking to them about the action plan that that committee needs to develop to bring that budget back into line and to do that as a matter of urgency. And also actually the role that this committee has in monitoring and managing both the development and the delivery against those plans that this Finance Subcommittee has. So that level of urgency, if you like, is at individual policy committee level quite literally starting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And so, final question I guess, does the portfolio committee, obviously the policy committees are all looking at their portfolios, is there another source, is there a corporate total for the kind of corporate spend that we can achieve savings there as a plan for that?
So there is a Strategy and Resources budget, if you like, that includes some of the central services like my own, like Gillian's, and some of the slightly more difficult to shift costs like capital financing that are a result of the past decisions as opposed to current future ones, that our job there is to frankly keep that within budget and no surprises to anybody. There is a corporate pot that we can have a look at in terms of the Resources Department's budget, it's not that big to be quite honest, the controllable element of that is about 20 million. So in the, and that's by stopping significant services, including most of mine to be quite honest. So there are things we can look at there but it's not a big pot to look at.
I mean, the one that comes to mind, I'm aware we're spending a lot more now than we were 10 years ago on trade union conveners, just to pluck an example out of the air, maybe, you know, that needs to shift its total spend in line with the total spend everywhere else, is that something that Strategy and Resources, for example, would look at?
If Strategy and Resources wants to look at that, absolutely.
Well, I think it does. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Livery.
Thanks Chair, thanks Ryan for the detail. The 50 million we've allocated is out of 103.9 million in reserves that's set aside for this sort of stuff. Unless we get on top of it, we're literally going to run into 23/24 and potentially ending with no reserves left. So, is the idea of bringing forward the budget planning in term review, making sure that all the policy committees have got a full vision of what it looks like going forward and to start early on some of these initiatives which might not be in the budget plan at the moment but necessarily need to be addressed to handle the reserve situation to make sure that we do have reserves at the end of 23/24.
That's absolutely right. Last year we allocated £70 million of reserves to support the budget of the council's total reserves, we decided as finance officers that that's what we could do without adversely affecting the council's ability to deal with risks and one-off events like flooding or like a major piece of road infrastructure that for whatever reason isn't covered by the highways, PFI contracts and bridges I think are in that camp. So we did that. The reason we were able to allocate so much money is because we looked at things like the reserve that we held against the risk of future pension cost increases. South Yorkshire Pension Fund is currently in surplus and that's a situation that's arisen over the last few years. So the chances of pension costs increasing in the immediate next few years, and in fact the valuation that's going through at the minute shows no cost increase, means that we don't need that reserve anymore, that's too prudent, holding a reserve against that. So we've used that and we've set that aside to help us get over the financial challenges that we're in. If we carry on running at a rate which is tens of millions of pounds more than our available resources, we will quickly run into trouble. Inflation is cumulative, so what was 20 million last year as a problem could easily turn into more than 20 million this year and the year after and so on, and you're using one-off resources to deal with that and that's not sustainable, that's like using your savings account to... like using your savings account to pay your own energy bills, at some point the savings account will run dry, it's exactly the same here. So it's really important that we get on to a level footing again. If we don't do that soon, what will happen is, we'll be running, our expenditure will be so much higher than our income that it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to avoid a situation where we've actually run out of the savings account. And that's what we need to guard against, so that's exactly why the budget process has been brought forward. It's exactly why we're having, you know, I'd really rather not use the first finance subcommittee meeting, frankly, for having such a difficult conversation, but it's why we've got to do it. And it's why I'm going around to every policy committee myself to have the same conversation with every policy committee, because I think it's critically important that we impress on all members of all committees the difficult position that the council's in and the work that needs to be done over the next few months.
So one presumes then the budget iteration process, which is going to be sort of October time, will be actually nailing down the following year and making sure it can be delivered because otherwise we are in trouble.
That's exactly right, we can't start 23, 24 on a shaky foundation, we've got to start it in, preferably ahead of time, we need to make an early start where that's possible, and we've got to start it on a really sound footing, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to ask a question? If not, if I can just ask, Ryan, the current in-year position, and I know the media and the public are interested in this, but he's just trying to understand how we've arrived at that, if you like, so there's going to be some timing issues there and there's difficulties in there, can you just explain that for if members of the public and the media are looking in and just how we've sort of got to that position where we are?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's quite normal early in a financial year for us to be reporting a forecast overspend, not of this size, but a forecast overspend nonetheless. And that's frankly because some of the changes that we ask the organisation to make to deliver its budget are not easy to make. We've been doing this for years and years and it's getting harder and harder and harder to do. Anything that was remotely easy was done 10 or 15 years ago and perhaps even longer ago. So getting some of the change projects up and running, making some of the changes to the way we deliver vital frontline services is hard, it's not easy to do. And sometimes that takes a bit of time, that causes two types of issues, it causes a delay in the delivery, so in other words, you know, a saving takes longer to realise than we expect it to, but it gets there in the end and still delivers a full run rate effect. So it'll have a full effect in 23, 24, but a part year effect in 22, 23. The second set of issues, and a lot of what we're looking at at the minute appears to be that, there's work to do to dig under it, but a lot of it appears to be timing. The other set of issues are where, you know, we in all good faith, put forward a saving, genuinely, you know, do the work, believe it can be delivered, when you get right into it and you start doing it, it proves to be either a lot harder or just impossible to do without, you know, causing us an adverse consequence that we didn't foresee at the time. Less of that, but there will be some savings that fall into that camp, so they're the two reasons really for the in-year position. As I said earlier, we've got some cost issues with things like energy, but we're managing those at the moment and we're keeping a lid on those at the moment, they will pop out later, so we're not in a position where we're seeing energy costs causing us a problem.
So, thanks. So the position we're in at the moment is a worst case scenario if nothing else happens and if the savings that are projected to go in the plans for this year, we don't get them in, as you say, the timing issue, so we should see that overspend is projected now coming down with some of the savings then getting implemented that we've not managed to get in that first month, am I right in summarising really what you said there?
I mean, the best estimate we've got at the minute is the kind of £18 million overspend for this year. Another way of looking at it is, what's the consequences of that overspend for the following financial year? And that helps you gauge what the timing difference is. And I don't know the honest, you know, I don't know the exact answer by any stretch to that yet, but I'd expect that to be, you know, £10 million or less. So in other words, a good half of it is timing and there'll be some delivery issues, but I'm still hopeful, again, really early on in the year, that most of it's a timing issue and that's what we're working really hard in the background to ensure that they really are timing issues and not delivery issues.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, councillor Elliot.
Hi, just two quick questions. So thanks for the explanation on reserves, just for reference, what is the current amount? Just, was it £103 million, was that right?
The council's total reserves are pushing towards £300 million.
Okay.
Some of that is not our money, so it's money that we hold on account for others, some of it's a timing difference between the way that the government pays us PFI grants and the money that goes out the door. What we looked at last year was the reserves we held against the council's risks and the total number at that time was around £150 million, if I remember rightly. So our judgement at that time was we could afford to use about half of it for budget management purposes, that's where we got the 70 from. Does that help without going into, I can go into loads of detail, but I suspect that's not, is that the answer?
Yeah, thanks. A other question, I'm not sure if it's a question for this overarching committee or for the specific policy committee. So with adult social care, you said the main challenge was the case reviews regarding case packages, care packages. What was the main challenge with regards to that or is this not the right place to ask?
Probably ask it again in another place, if you wish to. The issue is actually getting the staff, employing the staff, recruiting the staff
Actually carrying them out.
To do the job, yeah, it's a vast task, thousands of care packages need reviewing. And it's not easy work by any means, you know, you're having very difficult conversations with people, in some cases receiving fairly significant care packages and their families, this is not, this is by no means easy work and it's very challenging work to do. And one of the issues we've had is actually getting staff to do that work, not persuading staff, employing staff to do that work yet.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, nobody else then? So councillor Mohammed, you wanted to make a recommendation?
Just to kind of clarify, when you say, I'll come to a recommendation, when you say review care packages, basically you're looking at probably reducing what they get, if I'm going to be the ordinary person on the street rather than councillor speak.
In the pandemic, we took a deliberate decision to keep people in their own homes rather than where we would have normally recommended a care home package of care, we kept more people in their own homes. That was a conscious decision at the time. What that led to in some cases is extremely high-cost care packages where you were effectively providing care home levels of care in somebody's own home. So, you know, a care package of £2,000 or £3,000 a week has the potential, if it's the right thing to do, to be replaced by a care package in a care home of hundreds of pounds a week. So that's the conversation that now needs to be had. Also, people's needs do change over time, sometimes they increase, sometimes they reduce, it depends on the individual and that's where you need the skilled staff with the experience and capability to do this. And that's the task that needs to be gone through. So in some cases, you might find people being provided with more appropriate care that happens to cost less because it's in an environment that's actually catered better than their own homes for providing that level of care. So, sorry, that's a long answer and it's not as simple as you perhaps suggested, but it is more difficult than that, I'm afraid.
Okay, Chair, in recommendations, and I'm looking at page 23, I'm sure it's in all of them, so this is Transport, Regeneration, Climate Change Committee will recommend to commission work with offices to develop and implement plans to mitigate overspend and deliver stalled saving plans to bring forecast outturn back in line with budget, which is what we all want to see. But actually, could I make an additional suggestion to all of these, is to actually bring those saving options that, you know, weren't able to be delivered or weren't acceptable? Because the choice now we have is, we either try to balance this budget or we wait for the commissioners appointed by government to come and do it. And they may do it in a rather more robust way than we will try. So that would be my recommendation, Chair, that actually we have it all out to all the committee members to say, these were the options that you had in March or were being looked at in the run-up to March that weren't taken. And to get to a balanced position, these are some of the options unless we can get those BIPs back on track, would be my recommendation. I don't know how that's going to be worded, Craig, I'll leave that for you.
Can I just clarify, you're talking about all those going to the individual committees?
Sorry, Chair, so in addition to recommendations, for each one, let's say to each of those committees, I mean, how you're going to work it out as officers to say, that one falls into Transport and Environment, et cetera, whatever it's going to be, regeneration, climate change or what, but those options that weren't taken. So I know from my previous experience when we were in control at council, you kind of had red, green and amber, and I suspect what's happened is that the administration last year has taken the greens and amber and not touched the reds. So if that's helpful, let's look at the reds.
Thank you. Can I just clarify and apologies, I never got you to introduce yourself, Gillian, can I just ask, if this committee, and you introduced yourself, they've answered this, but this committee makes recommendations to the Strategy and Resources, so if the recommendation's passed here, that goes to the Strategy and Resources Committee, am I correct in that's what happens?
I'm Gillian Duckworth, I'm Director of Legal and Governance. This committee has the remit itself to be able to make recommendations to the committees as a subcommittee of Strategy and Resources, so you've been delegated enough decision-making power to be able to recommend to all committees rather than having to go back through Strategy and Resources.
Okay, thank you. So the recommendation, is this someone that's seconded the recommendation? Yeah? Yeah, councillor Rotten, got his hand up first there. A bit quicker, Mike, you need to get up a bit quicker there, I'll be watching in future going on. Okay, can I just, before we go for the, to put that recommendation and ask you there, can I just ask as well, is it worth us considering and looking at a moratorium on recruitment where we are with things at the moment? Because with the issues that are out there, I'd just like to understand whether that's something we ought to be recommending as well in looking through. So just the, what's the officer understanding if we were to look at that now until we get a grip of this, until we see where we are with the budget? As I say, it's one month in, but let's have a look and see where we are.
I think the task for me is for each of the policy committees to work out how best they can resolve their budget positions. And I think that the recommendation that councillor Mohammed's put forward is perfectly sensible from my perspective as an officer. There are savings that have been put forward and approved by council to be delivered, if they prove too hard to deliver for whatever reason, alternatives are welcome from my point of view as we seek to balance the budget. On recruitment, it falls into the category of things that are fairly blunt instruments with potentially damaging unintended consequences if we're not careful. So if we were to have a complete moratorium on recruitment, we wouldn't be able to recruit the children's and adult social workers that are necessary to do the work that's actually causing some of the budget implementation plans to be stalled. So I'd want to think carefully, and probably more carefully than I'm going to do on the hoof right now, about how to do that. So if you want me to have a think about that for the next Strategy and Resources meeting, perhaps we, with other members, can have a conversation with that and come back with something for that meeting, if that would help.
That's fine, it was just thinking, and sort of me on the hoof as well, I'm thinking where we are looking at things. So we've got a recommendation that we go back to all the committees, have a look at all the unpalatable suggestions from last year and have a look through, are we all in agreement with that? Is anybody in dissension? You're dissenting?
No.
Oh, right. Give us a chance, it's my first one. So if we're all in agreement with that, okay, so that recommendation will go forward. Thank you for that, Ryan.
Chair, can I just clarify, did you want that other bit to go as a recommendation? That something's taken to Strategy and Resources with regard to a moratorium on recruitment?
Yeah, I think that's one that we'll discuss and have a look at getting that into the agenda of the Strategy and Resources, to have a look at that there, because understanding, I think it needs a bit more understanding what it is, so I think that's something that if we can look at that for the work programme for the Strategy and Resources Committee. But that may be something that comes out as part of all the committees looking at their own individual budget as well, so they may be looking at that as recruitment needs within there, I suppose.
It was just whether the committee wanted to recommend that that was looked into, just whether formally or informally doing it, Chair?
I'm happy for us to look at it, I think probably the way of dealing with it would be case by case, so for example, Ryan talked about children's, we would just have a little chat about, off microphone, about the care reviews, you know, again, so I think, yeah, we could do it, but then, there's three of us here on that committee, aren't we? We can probably clarify what we were asking for, Ryan will be there, so I'm happy to take that as well, Chair, if that's helpful.
Okay, so including that in there, sorry, councillor Elliot.
Can I just say, I think on the face of it, I probably wouldn't support a moratorium on recruitment, I think it's counterproductive.
Thank you, and I think that was the point you were making there, Ryan, that we need to look at it in greater depth, so I think the recommendation is that the Strategy and Resources Committee looks at that and looks through with the services.
You need to vote on it.
You can work that out, the wording, can you?
You'll need to vote on it.
We'll need to vote on that, if you...
Move it second it and vote on it if you want it as a recommendation.
Just second it, because we're not going to, we're just going to look at it, what, you know, because there's no point recruiting more people to positions when we've got the budget situation we've got, but clearly case by case, there may well be cases where we have to recruit.
So rather than, possibly to get, for councillor Elliot, rather than saying a moratorium on no recruitment, looking at recruitment and whether it's necessary, is that appropriate wording? Reviewing all recruitment cases individually?
Perhaps, perhaps I can try and help a little bit. I think there's probably a question that you're asking is, how can we, are there any opportunities to limit recruitment to help us support the budget challenge we've got, but to do so in a way that doesn't damage budget delivery or vital services? That's why I hesitate on this one, because it's far from simple and I've not thought it through in the level of detail that's needed. I'm happy to try and do something for the Strategy and Resources on the 5th of July, there's also the next meeting of this committee, which is late July, early August from memory. That might be better because it'll give us proper time to have a conversation between me and my team and Mark Bennett, Director of HR, will need to be involved in this as well, and members of this committee so that you can perhaps understand some of the challenges and consequences of that. If individual policy committees want to make recommendations to take certain actions as they wish, that's clearly fine, you know, for them to do that.
So to clarify, the clarification of that, what we're looking is to ask the officers to go away to look at that and not to implement a moratorium, but to look at recruitment and whether it's appropriate, is that a better way of putting it? And councillor Elliot, are you, okay, sorry, councillor Elliot, would you be happy with that rather than using the words moratorium on recruitment?
Is it something we need to vote on?
Yes.
I wouldn't vote for it.
Okay, councillor Livery.
Just a suggestion, Chair, that we do it whilst maintaining frontline services, I think that's the key thing that needs to happen in this sort of review of recruitment, those front lines services are maintained, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a recommendation that's been put and seconded that we, just trying to think of the wording now, I think, Gillian.
Okay, I've had a go at some wording, so it's a recommendation to ask the Director of Finance to consider any limitation on recruitment to support the savings programme for this financial year and to report back to a future meeting of either Strategy and Resources or... and to report back to a future meeting of either Strategy and Resources or the Finance Subcommittee.
Is that, is that okay with, with members as the wording and then we'll go to vote on that? Yeah, okay, are we all in agreement on that?
Sorry, Gillian, could you just repeat that again please, one more time?
I can, ask the Director of Finance to consider any limitation on recruitment to support savings for this financial year and report back to a future meeting of the Strategy and Resources or Finance Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Sorry, I've just realised it's not this financial year, is it, it's next.
I think the, the, sorry, there's a risk you're giving me the power to stop recruitment and I don't think that's what you mean. So you're asking me to report back to this committee with options for the committee to consider, yeah?
Shall I just withdraw it?
I mean, we, we could withdraw it, it's not an issue for me, but it's just, if we are to balance this budget, we are going to be pulling out a call for more redundancies, right? So one, one end we're asking people, you know, can we lose some people and then we're trying to recruit for the other door, it doesn't seem sense to me. But I'm happy to take it to Strategy and Resources, let's have a conversation there, you're going to discuss it anyway, I don't think we need it then. Let's go and take it there and see what people feel there, the chairs, because all the chairs will be there at that meeting. And we can have a, a more detailed conversation there.
Happy, happy to withdraw that if, if that's okay with the rest of the committee because I've probably confused things and it might be better that we can sit down and discuss it and get a better understanding of, of what we mean, what I mean, and, and looking at things. Okay, so we took the other recommendation, the other recommendation was, was approved, so thank you very much for that Ryan. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the capital approvals for month one, and Damien is here to present.
Oh yeah, thank you, there's three recommendations really, the, the focus around the, the changes to the programme for this year. I've got really just reporting back for the formal ratification of the changes to the budget for this year as a result of how we finished last year. Because just under the financial regs, the slippage has to be noted, reported and approved here. And finally, we've also got the issue of a grant that we, is going to be issued to Corus Trust regarding the work at Silverdale School for the expansion there that's previously been approved at a COP Exec. I don't know if people want me to go quickly through the individual items, there's not many this month. Largely just the Brookhill, Brookhill area improvements is the result of road safety audit, so that's installing a mast arm for, for traffic signals. The clean air zone signage is just an increase in budget to allow us to award that contract and get that installed so that, that project can continue and start to, or deliver some of the income that's going to come in from that as well in order to maintain the cycle of it. There's a couple where it is worth noting, the town hall square animation and there's another green school roofing budgets that have been impacted by inflation in the sector, which is why they're showing needing increased budgets, 146k on the town hall square animation and, and 320 on the Nether Green School roof. It is the result of tenders are coming back a lot higher, so we are starting to see that feed through. Those items are covered through existing grants that we've got in, but it just means obviously there's less of that grant now to do other things, particularly on that schools estate, so that's just worth, worth noting. There's a, just a technical adjustment on the housing IT system. The way we're delivering that now is, is actually revenue expenditure rather than capital. So that's managed by reducing the contribution to the capital budget in years, it won't, it won't have a net impact on the revenue spend, on the revenue budget. It will just reduce the contribution that would have been made to the capital budget to, to see that through. I've mentioned Nether Green School roof and then there's, yeah, the other, the smaller items around the Firth Park Towers, there's some feasibility work that needs to be done there. Some degradation in that building and it's a list of buildings, that needs to be reviewed and looked at. And the only other item really was the, and again, it's, it's education, family spending from the high needs budget around converting, some conversions at halfway school to allow disabled access and disabled changing toilet facilities on that side, which is something that needs to be delivered, particularly for September. There's, there's some pupils coming through that are going to require those. So they're the approvals for specifics that are new. Appendix two just summarizes where we got to at the end of last year. There will be a more detailed outturn report coming through that will, yeah, break this down. I mean, this is, this is a lot of detail here, but we'll explain in more detail how some of these projects came to be in the position they are. But effectively, we were, we spent 43 million less than budget last year. The majority of that is slipping, for projects slipping into the current year. And really we're just asking here for formal ratification that those projects can continue along their, along, along their timeline, albeit, albeit slipped. And then the final, final issue, like I said, was the recommendation to issue the grant to Corus Trust who are going to deliver the expansion to the school in order to deliver the places that are needed in the South West of the city. COP Exec approved that budget, I think it was in March. This is just the detail of the funding agreement that's been brought here in order to just outline to members, you know, on what terms we'll be entering to that agreement to pass over approximately 7.3 million for them to deliver that expansion. And that, without going into lots and lots of detail on that appendix two, which I know is really large, but we just try and pull everything together so that, you know, it's, it's, you know, that information is available. That's really what we've got come forward this month.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thanks Damien, are we seeing any financial pressures with projects due to the high inflation rates, certainly in the construction sector? And are they starting to show through?
Yeah, well, like I said, there was, there's been a couple particularly this month that have shown, you know, going after tender and then the prices have been coming back higher than anticipated. Also fewer, fewer tenders being received because people are, firms are picking, can, can pick the work really and they're finding it difficult to hold prices, that's the other thing that's come out recently from colleagues in procurement that the time you've got to make a decision on whether to accept a tender is, is, is shortening. So yes, we are seeing those feeding through and I think, as far as, I think Capital Delivery Services are working on an, an updated briefing note on that which should be coming around fairly shortly, they did one last year around, you know, the, the inflation, the problems in the sector. They're, they're working on that again now, sort of like an update to that. So yes, I've seen it come to one, just a couple of items this month, so yeah, it's something we're having to keep, keep a close eye on.
So I presume that's going to come to committee when you've done that work to, to show what the picture looks like?
I believe so, I believe Capital Delivery Services are working on that note now just to, so that can come, yeah, for that to be brought through here.
We'll look out for that coming through then, thank you, Council Rock. Thank you, thank you, yes, just on the, on another green school roof, I just, can I just ask how, how, how come it's taken so long and when, when's it actually going to happen? My, my, my daughter was at that school when the piece of plaster fell off the roof and, and hit her teacher. I think that's at least two years ago now, she's no longer at that school. You know, I know it's been disruptive to the school, I think, I don't know, they, they, they got round in the event, in the end and managed to make use of the school hall. But, but you know, it's a long time since that, that condition, that roof became apparent. Is there any, yeah, what's the reason it's taken so long?
I'd have to go back and check when the, because this would have been through an initial business case stage where, you know, there's feasibility work done. So I'd have to go back and check when that was originally brought forward. But then obviously, once they've been through that stage of assessing, they then have to send the documents, get them out to sender. I think the problem they've had again with this one was, you know, that tender came back and, well, what they'd also tried to, there'd have been an attempt at times saying, oh well, perhaps there's additional works we could do to, while, while we've got scaffolding up, but because the tender price came back so high, then, oh no, well actually, you know, we can't afford to do that. So now it's, this is getting disapproved now so that they can press go and get on in the summer holidays. So, but I can go back and see what the timeline's been and feedback, yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, any, any other questions, Mike?
Yeah, I'm conscious that we've got a five-year re-roofing programme going on with council houses starting in south-east. In north, we've got a lot of single-skin concrete overlap council houses. The insulation issues can go up with that before we re-roof, do you know, and that is in the programme?
I don't know, I'd have to find out details from the project manager on that, that I can, can find out on the re-roofing programme. I know they've got, there are, there are, although there are other works going on around insulation. So they've got the local authority decarbonisation funding and they've got some warm homes grants that have just come through, that I think came through for approval a couple of, a couple of months ago. So there are, there is other funding coming in around insulation, but I can particularly check if, if it's happening as part of the re-roofing scheme.
And Mike, do the Mike, Chaplin, Council Chaplin.
Thank you, thank you Chair, and and thank you for this report Damien. There's, there's clearly a lot of work going on as, as you, as one looks through these, these pages. It is encouraging to see that despite slippages and in some cases, some firms going into liquidation even, but there are, there are a lot of projects on the go. So, so thank you for the work that's, that's being done there. If I can just pick up on a, a little bit of local interest, it's NCBH on Adlington Road, is that? I'm just wondering what that relates to?
New build council housing.
That's new build council housing, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of acronyms which hopefully we'll be able to.
When we're trying to pull something of that size together, I'm, I'm taking a lot of information directly from various systems and don't always have time to take, take all those out, so I do apologise.
No, thank you very much for that anyway.
Sorry, seemed to have logged out there, yeah, thank you for that. It is difficult sometimes, some of the acronyms, and you, you can sit there and puzzle over it and then someone just says something, oh, that's what it is. It's, it's perhaps helpful if we had a glossary, but I, I understand there's a lot in there, but by the end of the, by the end of the year, we'll all be totally okay with what these are. Council Roof.
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question about the Silverdale expansion. Do we have a, a rough estimate for how long that's going to take?
Well, those places I believe need to be available for September 23. So that is the window we're working within at the moment. Again, our Capital Delivery Service team have been heavily involved in that, so they've been working with the trust and looking at the plans and everything that we've been trying to do to get these approvals in place so that, that can be delivered within that timescale and that's.
Further to that, I note King Egbert's was another school that was looking at expanding as well. Have, what situation with their, or have they, has any funding been given for King Egbert's?
Yes, yeah, so actually coming through next month, something we just had brought to us is King Egbert's, so, so Corus Trust wanted to deliver themselves on that site and they were happy to procure and project manage. And so we've agreed to go down that route with them, King Egbert's actually wanted the council to deliver and project manage. So there's no funding agreement here, but yes, the budget was approved originally for 5.5 million for that one. It's come through slightly higher, so I think we're bringing through another 300k increase next month from memory. So yes, both those are going through, it's just the different delivery routes, which is why we've got a funding agreement with the trust for, for this one. But it'll be in-house delivery for the, on the King Egbert side.
And my final question on that actually, I note Silverdale's is 7.4 million. What's, or why is there a difference between the two, or where is the difference coming from?
I think there's, well, they're delivering different numbers of places, the numbers of places are for Silverdale referenced here, but I, I don't know the ones for King Egbert's offhand. I know that Silverdale were delivering some more six form places and some SEND, special educational needs six form places as well. So I think they're delivering a higher number of places than, than King Egbert's. And a lot of that is, you know, is driven around the areas, the area required for the number of pupils. So I know that Silverdale are delivering more of those places, so it, it would, it would make sense that actually that is going to be a, a higher cost. But I can get your comparative, comparative numbers.
Please, yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be really useful, thank you.
Okay, anybody else got any questions or comments? No, I think I'll just add myself, I'd just echo what, what Council Chaplin said, in, in spite of everything else that we, we've seen there, we are still seeing some investment that's going on across the city and, and hopefully we'll see more of this that's going on that helps reduce some of the, the repairs backlog that we're aware of. If we can reduce that, then that will hopefully reduce some of the impact on the revenue budgets for the services out there as well. So thank you for that Damien and there is a recommendation to, to, do we all agree with the recommendation to accept the report? Is that okay, yeah, thank you very much. That concludes this, this meeting, thank you very much officers, thank you members for attending. We'll call the meeting to a close, thank you.